Just all on the evacuation procedure. And we're not planning an alarm this evening, so if you do need one, it is a real one. So I'm hearing the evacuating call, please carry out the following. Exit the building by your nearest and southeast exit, which for our visitors will be behind you. I'll do my best air steward impression. And all visitors report to Assembly Point G and all staff report to their designated Assembly Points on that way. We've got Paul tonight, so he would be our senior officer, so he would wait to evacuate, to leave before that he could inform the steward controller that we wouldn't leave before Paul knew where we were. But thank you for that. So that's the evacuation procedure. Apologies for absence and members away on business. So we have apologies from Council Pluse this evening and substitute Council Hayfield, thank you very much. Welcome. Have we got any other apologies? Thank you. Any disclosable or punitive or non-proctological injury? Thanks for your visit. And we have two visitors with us tonight. We've got Martin Shifley from CMA and we've got Matt Humphrey from RSN. So welcome to resources this evening.
Thank you.
And Agenda Item Four, Public Participation. It's one of those boards where we're always overrun with the public with their questions, obviously. But no, so that saves us 20 minutes that we normally set aside for public questions. Moving on to Agenda Item Five, Minutes of the Resources Board held in the 10th of March. Just go through those. You've got any questions? Or do I have a pause for a second for those? Thank you, Council Humphries. Do a second. Thank you, Council Jane B. All in favour? Thank you. That's unanimous. I'll sign those minutes as true by record. Not sure if there's a moment. Okay. Okay, so moving on to the names of the intended. Agenda Item Six, Angela with us this evening for this one. Provision of Adaptions for Council Tenants. So our recommendation to officers aboard this evening is to consider and adopt the draft policy statement and that note that note to be taken of the cost of providing up adaptations for tenants and the positive impacts on those tenants receiving them. So thank you for that. If you've got anything you want to say in terms of the introduction to this report or any, before we move on to questions. Council Hayfield there.
Just to say that probably your policy statement on this is a little overdue. Because we have been delivering these types of adaptations for many years. And the policy really just seeks to set out clearly what the council's position is. And change is little, but it is clear that the heart service will assess need and then comes through to the council as the landlord to provide permission or not for the adaptation. And we effectively deliver the adaptation from the council's capital fund.
Thank you. Council Hayfield.
Thank you, Chair. It's been a long time since I thought of this. But years ago, going back into agency history, we were pretty rich when it came to delivery times for adaptations. And we worked very hard, officers and members, and I've improved on that. I just wondered, I know these things are going to be variable, but for example, a stairlift. If somebody's saying, I need a stairlift. How long does it take to actually get a stairlift team these days? I mean, we've got it down for about six months. Obviously, you can't even improve on that.
We are dependent on the specialist contractor to put the stairlift in. But generally, if it's a straightforward stairlift and hasn't got a bend in it and all of that, then certainly two months and an outlier would be three. But the same with level access showers. We tend to do one a week and we're generally turning them around in in a couple of months if there's nothing too complicated.
That sounds a substantial improvement, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Simpson, then Council Humphries.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, like I can, so I hope you don't remember the bad old days when we were underperforming, shall we say. And I think it wasn't just adaptations for council tenants, but adaptations for private sector tenants as well. We'd be interested to see where we're at to on the other side of the equation. What I'm not really clear on, Chairman, is that in 2024, 2025, we spent just over £440,000. The budget for 25, 26 is less than that significant estimate. Do we have a feel of what the backlog is and how it can cost us to run with that? And are we comfortable that £350,000 is on the budget, given that we spent £440,000 last year?
There isn't a backlog. So again, as you say, that is how we used to live. And there used to be a cutoff point at the end of the financial year. And if we sort of run out of money from that last bit, then you'd have a backlog into the new financial year. So we don't do any more of that. So there isn't a backlog. And the reason that it's more than the budget in stark terms is because of extensions. So generally, how we do it is that the budget in the capital fund, we assess as covering stairlifts, ramps and level access showers. It will depend on how many come through. Generally, that covers that. And what I've tended to do over the last few years, you'd be aware, is if we're asked to do an extension, then I'll come to board and say, do we agree that we're going to do that extension? And if we are, do we agree the funding? And I think this policy helps some of that decision making. Because I think generally, we probably are still going to provide extensions to support tenants. But sometimes there might be suitable alternatives close to where the person lives. And I think that might be a consideration. But nonetheless, that's generally where we stretch the budget when we have an extension or two. Because you don't know how many are going to come through.
That's really helpful, Chair, and save me a bit tonight. The one thing I should have also asked, though, as I might as well forget. Could the officer explain to us a little bit more about this up to £20,000 loan? I read somewhere that there was an amount of grant and another amount of grant, then £20,000. And I'm slightly wary that the loan does a base of the grant, and if we're actually doing it all along.
So that's lack of clarity, I think, in my report. So yes, in the private sector, and I will report on that in October, so I'll definitely do a report in October. But on the private sector, there's an amount of grant that comes out of the disabled facility grant nationally, which is sort of up to £30,000, depending on what somebody needs. But because that's light in current costs, for heart, for the private sector, then we offer as part of the private sector deal, a £20,000 interest-free loan, but also a further grant. So for heart, on the private sector, it's quite generous, up to £70,000. For council tenants, so that is part of trying to put this in a policy. For council tenants, I'm saying it wouldn't be a loan, it would still be, we're delivering it. But I'm saying we should be in line with that DFG and the financial assistance policy and say that in more circumstances, our cap would also be £70,000, because that puts us in line with the private sector. I mean, obviously, we're not going to squeeze our tenant for another little bit. But generally, I think it just sets the scene that this is the parameter that we're working to. And then we can make decisions around that. And it's clear for tenants and also clear for anybody who has a buyer's in them.
Yeah, and there's an equity in those lines between the private, you know, private property and council tenants, so they're not disadvantaged at the end. Council Humphries.
Yes, Chair. Well, the process is quite ponderous. I was dealing, when I was still a councillor, so was my wife, and we were dealing with somebody in New Regis. He was in a pretty parlous state, you know, had an accident, 52 years old, in their 80s now. Money runs out, all that sort of private, private house owner. But one thing I will say, Angela's been marvellous with that concern, because it's not only what Angela knows. There's a thing about Angela, it's who she knows as well. And I'd say thank you very much. Because only last week, the job, two years on almost, has got completed and done. And that man's never left the house for nearly two years as a result of the shape in the house. And without Angela doing what she did through the people that she knows, I think he'd still be sat on a, laying flat on a wheelchair. So it is ponderous, the process. There is a gap, in my opinion, between private housing and getting the other agencies involved. For example, Heart was the stumbling block here. But I would like to have admitted to say thank you very much for what Angela has done for the process for people in the, our tenants and also people that unfortunately enough need that help in private housing. And thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And there's many examples that come up, and I know that Angela's brought some challenging ones to us, particularly when some of the extensions have been required that have been quite extensive. And at the moment, because of the inflationary prices around construction, they've been incredibly expensive. And so that's been, there've been some challenging decisions for the board. That's the day, did you?
Yeah, I was just wondering, with regard to the timeframe, does the local authority, as in us, get involved with the financial assessment that's been done for adult care? Or are you involved right from the beginning?
So on the council side, Heart would look at somebody's needs and their requirement for an adaptation. And then there's a new needs test for council tenants. And that would just come straight through to us for delivery. So for council tenants, it is quicker, because sometimes when, on the private side, if you get to that point of doing the financial assessment, and if it's not enough and people have to think, well, do I want a loan? Quite rightly, they have to take a bit of time for that. So I think, as Council Humphrey says, on the private side, it is a little bit more involved because of the considerations. And I don't tend to get involved in that unless there's an issue where I need to sort of say what's happening here. And so I don't tend to get involved in that. We tend to just deal with the council side.
But prior to us getting involved, that could be a bit more of a lengthy period.
For a council tenant, it's, there's no doubt that Heart have been taking longer than anybody would want to make a decision on the adaptation, because they've had capacity issues. But we've changed how team work now, so that should move things through. So that there is a significant change in that, and I will report that in October. Because as Council Humphrey says, we started to become very aware of cases that were okay, that were doing their best, but they just weren't getting to them. So there is an improvement there. But for a council tenant, because there isn't the needs test and the consideration of what, how they're going to do that adaptation in that property, private property, it would tend to be quicker, quicker coming through and quicker delivery, because at that point, it's in our hands.
You did raise a question earlier, and I just wondered whether or not there was a point that we needed to ask, is if someone gets sadly a terminal diagnosis.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I just had one. It wasn't North Yorkshire, it was Nantucket, Bedlands. The gentleman had a terminal diagnosis and let's just say by the time they got around to getting it sorted, it'd gone. And it was more than six months.
Yeah.
Does it re-prioritise anything essentially? So what's the question?
Unfortunately, we did a review of the service all that time ago. One of the big concerns was that people were, you know, not letting them know enough to get. That was a big factor for us. And I think the statistics would show that that has improved. But really, for somebody like that, then although they tend to work in day order, because people's needs are generally the same, for something like that, there should be a way of fast-tracking. And I will go back and make sure, I will go back and make sure.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions on that paper? Oh, Council Watson.
Thank you, Chair. Just for my own clarity, this policy, I know it's on the back of this policy appendix I talked about the other five or the other few districts and boroughs. So is this a standard policy across all the five district boroughs in Warwickshire? They talk about signatories and notices, etc.
So Brookly's got a policy, Nantucket's got a policy, they're completely different. And to do this one, I looked at Tannworth's policy as well. So having looked at everybody else's, I've written what I thought was appropriate for us. And if you're happy with it, I'll consult with, obviously, the Borough White Tenant Forum as well. But I'm going to pitch this as the policy that others should adopt first. So if you're happy with it, I'm going to say to everybody else, you know, they can do some bespoke things locally, but I think generally, the manager in Heart is happy with it. So I think we can start.
Because it makes sense to have a standard policy.
Yeah, absolutely. But I didn't like anybody else's.
Fabulous. Any other questions? If not, I'm happy to propose that. Thank you, Council Hayfield, all in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, the Landlord Service and Complaints Handling. As we last went at executive, we've had, we've had some exciting complaints and we're getting more and more complaints. Not that there's hundreds and hundreds of them, but we've talked quite a lot with the the tenants law and the Slough, particularly about making sure we go, that's registered properly. And one of the key things for me is for learning from that. And I'm pleased that that's in the recommendation of Point D, that the importance of learning from the complaints is supported. So what we've got to look at tonight from this report is that people have considered the contents. The importance of meeting the terms of the Ombudsman's Code and the necessity to complete self-assessments about how we manage complaints. Learning from them, obviously, and that there's an annual report that is considered unagreed. So we know that the Ombudsman's been much more demanding about the complaints procedure. Is there anything you'd like to add to this report or say about your report?
I mean, only the, our deal with complaints on the landlord side of the council services is in accordance with the statutory requirement. So it was slightly different, I suppose, to the rest of the council. And everything we do is in accordance with what the Ombudsman tells us to do. Because if we don't do it that way, then we'd have to explain that and there would be possibly some maladministration. So we obviously'd be sick to the court.
Council Hayfield.
I'm sure there's a quick answer to this, but do we go back to the complainants and find out whether they are happy with the way complaints we go?
Yeah. So after every complaint's answered, I mean, we always put at the end, if there's anything else we can do, or, you know, so you put that at the end anyway. But then they do get a satisfaction survey, just quick, you know, not grim. A satisfaction survey, just to say, are you content with what we've done? I mean, some people just kind of stay at bat for us and say, yeah, that's great, thank you very much. And so, well, that's fine as far as it goes, but can you consider this, which is also fine? So yeah, but there is a satisfaction survey in there that says, tell us how you found it.
I mean, I guess that if somebody gets what they want, they're going to say they're satisfied. If they don't get what they want, they're going to say they're not satisfied. But generally speaking, we're getting decent feedback.
We are. And generally, I think you can see that not many go up to stage two. So you've got more at stage one and then downward at stage one, because they've then got the opportunity to go up to stage two if they're not content, and then go up to the Ombudsman. So we've only had one to the Ombudsman this year. I mean, I think it probably is a failure not to go over the deal with it at stage one. Because even at stage one, if they didn't go to stage two, if they weren't happy and they just say, sometimes we can just say, okay, we didn't understand that. So we'll just do a bit more. So I think generally, from not going to equivalent of stage one, going to stage two, you can see we're resolving most of them at stage one, which is what we're to do.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council Watson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And just picking up on your point there, Angela, because it's interesting that that we can deal with them all in stage one. And I guess just some assurances that just because they complain, they don't jump to the top of the list. I'd sooner the process was right and the, you know, the sequencing or the scoring system that they were being dealt with was correct. Because we often see where people complain, people deal with them just to get them off the radar and satisfy them. But that's not fair to everybody else.
Yeah. No, I think that's, yeah, if you're not careful, it could skew things, couldn't it? What we're asked to do is really listen to what the tenant's telling us. And even if, so I've had one, we've had one this week where actually we haven't been negligent, we haven't acted incorrectly. But that isn't to say that what happened didn't affect that person really significantly. And it's, we're asked to sort of emphasise that and understand that and feed back on that. But that doesn't mean to say necessarily we're going to change what we did or something went fundamentally wrong. Sometimes, you know, people didn't want to say, but that didn't, that didn't work for me. Now, we certainly have to explain ourselves. I mean, we're accountable, aren't we? And that doesn't mean to say, say, people who gets compensation or whatever it is, or they go to the top of the tree on a repair. Sometimes we say, well, I had one again recently where she was concerned about the time scale we've replied to a complaint. And actually, our standard's five days, and she complained at day three. So I did say to her, I'm sorry that you had that perception that we weren't interested. But we had got sort of three to five days to reply and we were within our standard.
Counselor Simpson.
Thank you. I thought, again, very interesting and helpful report, particularly in the appendix B, understanding the nature of the complaints and the details in the appendix B. Sort of asked and answered a bunch of questions I had. Some of my comments in this project are a lot, if you will, about the Landlord Service, per se, but Complaints Handling as a generality. And it's the nature of the stage one and stage two complaints that I'm interested in, about how effective that is and if that is currently best practice. My perception and what some constituents have said to me in the past is that having a complaint, having to find a department that received the complaint doesn't feel like they're necessarily going to get some investigation, as they question it. I'm not for one minute suggesting that that is the case. And I know that the complaint is always investigated by an officer who was not concerned with the subject matter of the complaint, it's someone else. But going through that two-stage process doesn't feel necessarily like best practice to me. But I don't know what best practice is for Complaints Handling anymore. Is that our perception as a council that that is still fit for function? Or should there be a more independent review of complaints?
Okay. I suppose there's two parts to that, isn't there? There's the corrective action, if you take it because you've put someone on the loose complaints where something hasn't happened that they expected might, or something's not happening in a way that they thought it might, so the example, repair maybe. And then you've got a more general complaint about an action that might require some serious investigation, which may not be appropriate to be handled by the incumbent partner. So I suppose there's two parts to that, doesn't there? Isn't there? I mean, do you want to come in on that, Paul? I can see you intercasing there.
Yeah. Not indicating that it's best practice, but certainly the last three authorities that I've worked at have all had two-stage processes. And it is, I think, normal practice for the service to answer the first stage and then usually an escalation to a more senior, non-service-related individual for the second stage. I don't know why our second stage process is here, but that's certainly in the authorities that I've worked at previously been the process. And then, as Angela said, Ombudsman beyond the second stage process.
Certainly, reporting the chief executive's team is the second stage.
Yes. And that feels like that's an escalation. I think that, for me, is the key point, that it's an escalation in stage two. So if it's service from one escalates into two and they just say Ombudsman for three, that that's what I've seen in other authorities.
And I understand all that and I don't necessarily disagree. And certainly at stage two, there clearly has to be an escalation. And the difficulty of having that sort of more independent review at stage one removes the opportunity for the escalated complaint. I understand that. But I would like to know if that's the best practice, maybe for some other authorities doing better practice.
I mean, that's the corporate side, but on the housing Ombudsman side, that's what we're asked to do. That's what we're taught to do. So that's what we did.
That's confirmed.
Started with that, I think, I was starting to recall.
I should mention that most will be doing that, so that would be deemed to be best practice. But gentlemen, thanks. We can have a look. Thank you. The Castle Parsons.
Yeah, I was just going to say, more or less what Paul said, actually. I mean, obviously, it's going from the department, still within the council, to the senior level of the council. And then there is the independent option of the Ombudsman, which, that seems fairly reasonable to me. But at least then, I mean, if it can be solved in-house, then it's better solved in-house to me at this, you know. And that's the point of stage two, really, to give the tenant the feeling that they are being looked at. And actually, also for the council to say, well, right, are we doing what we really need to do here? Can we do better or is this where we are? And finally, you've got the Ombudsman. That seems to me to be reasonable.
Thank you. Any other, oh, that's the same.
Yeah. When you get a complaint from a certain ward, do you still let the councillors of that ward know?
Yes.
And we have the option to speak to them, see them as well or not?
To the officer.
Or the complainant.
I don't think you get that detail.
No, you don't get the information, the person information of the complainant, but you get. So when I've had them for my ward, I've had, you know, such and such, maybe not even the name, actually, someone in Stonebridge Road, for example, has complained about the nature of their complaint is about routine maintenance or repair to the building or whatever. And then for a lady with major pain contacts, you know, Angela. Denise, Council Pluse, is also, as Chair of the Housing Subcommittee, Tossen Finch, from this group, does see all the complaints and meets with Angela regularly as well and reviews complaints. So they're also reviewed by a member. Is that clear?
Yes.
And if you do want to, and I suppose that information allows you, that if that member of your ward, past year, says, I've got a complaint or I've made a complaint, I'm not getting anywhere, you then have sight of it and you can find out a bit more. I've only ever had that, I think, once. Because they're normally quite on top of those generally, the ones that I've had. But again, yeah, but we talk about the themes through the housing subcommittee as well, the themes of complaints and where sort of focus and attention needs to be particularly. And that's how the, I suppose, the learning and the corrective action piece comes from, you know, the recommendation D. We talk about learnings from those, don't we, and put the different things in place. And that then starts to shape policy. Are there any other questions in that one? Everyone's content and happy with this report, then? Content to support the recommendations? Okay. Do I have a proposal? Council Jane B., thank you. Second, Council Amelia, thank you very much, all in favour?
Speaker Nicholas, thank you very much. Moving on to the next one, Agenda Item, which is Members Allowances, Agenda Item Eights.
To be honest, thank you very much. Moving on to the next one, a general item, which is members allowances, general item eights. And simple recommendations, even as that we note with the report, big points to make on this stuff. Castle Simpson.
Hi, Chair. Sorry, um, three, three, two relatively minor, you know, relatively more. Um, I invite us to be sure that in, uh, three point, two point three, if doing now, although we're doing personal chronicle as well, you know, I'm a very substantial volunteer, it's after the table. Just a bit, it covers the, the whole of the, well. Um, on, on the, and it's a, particularly for the initiatives. I think we abolished the post leaders of the deputy leader of the council sometime earlier.
Yes.
Um, and for the period of this report, I think they were no, they were no longer three deputies leader of the council, there was only one deputy leader. Um, and, and the, the chairman of, um, creative environment resources and planning are no longer deputy leaders. So we should, should get that right. And, and thirdly, the more important thing, if I am sort of concerned that so few members are claiming their, um, tab and mine costs. The whole, the whole reason we, we do this is that, um, members don't feel any financial disadvantage in attending meetings. And I think when we get to a stage where less than a third of the council are being reimbursed for their reasonable costs of attending meetings, it's suggestive of, um, a, uh, it's a bad approach, or something the right word, you know, there should be no challenge to members having their attendance costs reimbursed. That, that's the policy of what government does. All the political parties are signed up to it. And I know there is inevitably that. Concerned sometimes that the people aren't here to make money. Yes. I don't, even the level reimbursement members get, very few could actually, you know, chums this authority on that basis. But the whole point was there should be no financial disadvantage, disincentive for members. And, you know, I don't say those are, are lower incomes from attending , um, meetings of the authority and taking a full part. Where we have got to this low level of reimbursement to travel costs, that, that I think is concerning. And I'd like us to do some more work to understand why that is. And then we can ensure that that is, there is no perception of behaving badly. And that members are fully encouraged to take part and taking part involves paying for petrol expenses again.
Thank you, Castle Simpson. Yes, I think over the years, it's become a bit of a thing about not claiming or, you know, unless you go somewhere particularly different, like you have to get trained to London or whatever, you know, general expenses, people tend not to claim. And I get that perhaps if anyone corner. But one of the purposes of that is to make it accessible to all people. And actually, if there's a a, a perception that they shouldn't, or that it would be seen as, in a, make them be seen in a bad light, then actually it isn't, it isn't very inclusive. So I, you know, I get, I get what you're, I get the point you're making there. And maybe we need to look up, making sure that we pay to members that like, what, and reiterate the policy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, I absolutely agree with the point, absolutely understand the point. Um, it is a very much a personal, um, uh, view of what individual members want to do in terms of, um, in, in, in terms of their expenses. Um, but yeah, we could, we can reiterate the policy and, and reset it around so that members are aware of what it is. But I absolutely tend to follow.
Thank you.
Um, Chair, and just out of interest, I've only been here two months, so. We have, even though we're aware of the Ken system, neither myself and my colleague don't actually know where the forms are and how to go about making claim. So that's just out of interest. So even if you would be willing to do so, there, there doesn't seem to be, it's a name where I can pick up that information myself. And allow me to do that just out of interest. So maybe that is possibly why maybe someone isn't coming forward. I mean, we're not exactly definitely coming forward now while we're here, but, um, I don't think necessarily people are aware where they get that information from. I don't know. Mr, um, Steve Watson doesn't know either. So just.
Thank you for raising that. We can address that straight away. I'm sure comfortable.
We do with the policy.
Definitely. Yeah, just, you know, make sure people have got that. Castle Watson.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. I mean, it is a spreadsheet, effectively. It's not particularly, uh, intuitive online, um, on the system. Uh, I know county have one, counties are much simpler, uh, online system to do. Just one point I will raise, because I am somebody who claims, uh, that their mileage, um. What I've never asked for though, is a VAT receipt. And yet if I was, and I'm happy to provide them because obviously I've put the fuel in the car, whereas I'm sure as a borough, we reclaim the VAT on that. So that's just something else that we might want to think of when we reiterate this policy.
Do you, Chair? See, that's a really good point.
Yes.
So, yeah. Thank you. We can reclaim the VAT, um, and I know it's not significant, um, but it'd be interesting with, you know, so.
But that in the property law, central government.
Yeah. Absolutely agreed.
That point's taken for central government. They'll find another way to come back.
Yeah, that's absolutely, yeah, left, left, right, hands.
Thank you. That, Castle Amy.
Not submit an easier process. You know, when you work full time and transfers every evening, every weekend with parish and dogs and families and God knows what else. It's the last thing on my mind, once a month, just to do something like that. And I don't think I've claimed expenses for four years.
So. I'll, I'll, I'll have a look. I love the spreadsheet, but if this takes, not sure that's necessarily the easiest way, I thought, I thought, like, for.
Well, you didn't have to print off sign and drop in.
Which like.
Yeah. Yeah. Then I'll do the whole thing.
I need to make that a bit easier.
I'll read, I'll read, I'll read the policy, that's what, that's appropriate.
All the day rather it is, so definitely. Well, yeah, I, I'm not sure I've ever seen from my, I think this is my eighth year and I don't think I've claimed one yet. So, yeah. Very well. But thank you for that. I think that's been really useful.
Yeah.
Um, I'm happy to pose this, only for noting, but propose this from the Chair, the second, Castle Simpson, all in favour. Thank you very much. Moving on to Jen Johnson, right. Internal audit annual report. So we have, um, our visitor tonight, we have Martin with us, Adam Seapool. But I've said a few words before we go through the report, but thank you for coming.
Yeah, so I will hand, so Martin will do his substantive, uh, presentation of, of DINGAP's report, which is dependent to, uh, tomorrow's. But I wanted to do a short report which sets out what we're doing to address the limited assurance. And we, the annual report, taking some of the recommendations and comments from, um, from CNEAP's report. And you've got a risk management, uh, audit, which is in the internal audit progress report with no assurance. And Matt Humphries, the one that stands here, set out the work that we started to do on risk management, which I think has already taken us away from, um, from a kind of no assurance position. So we're making some good progress on that. Um, already there is a, and it's already been mentioned a couple of times, some are already about policies and procedures. We need to make sure all our policies and procedures are reviewed up to date and where they should be. Website, um, or, or wherever. Um, and that isn't just a piece of work around, um, for what is mentioned in the report. But I think it's, it's a bit more extensive than, than that. So that's something, yeah, again, talking to, to Matt to get some assistance with, with some of those policies and understanding. To get to Simpson's point, always what's best practice. So what's best practice, what's policy, good policy look. Um, in terms of financial management system, um, had some issues in terms of implementation, uh, more than 12 months in, still having, um, issues that we tried to rectify and we've made some significant processing when we're doing so. Um, but the reflection of how the project was run and uh, whether or not finance got involved in the project, I think is, is fair. And what we want to do is take that into how we review the project going forward. As you'll be aware, we've got some very significant projects that are always going, the governance around those is, is really important. It's something that, um, we know we need to get right, we know we need to review. Make sure that what we do in the future, um, is appropriate in terms of, in terms of budget management. More than missing, um, it is normal. Um, again, that definitely is best practice. Um, and it's definitely what I've experienced in previous authorities. However, the, and, and will be landing. It currently isn't. Um, obviously we're, um, moving towards like reorganisation. So we may get there before we need to actually go in what it commits in. But what I wanted to do was acknowledge the point, because I think he is right. I think most, most of us agree that actually, you know, this city where external and internal and governance is, is looked at as a, as a whole, is, is a way, but we're not going to do it until we don't exactly say we should do. Um, and.
And just to add to that, that did come up in our peer review as well. You're very, very aware of it, very conscious of it. And, and we can sort of have those conversations somewhere about when the right time may or may not be to put that in place.
And, and I think that, that it's finishing the positives. So there, there are positives within the, um, the report. Angela?
The one, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, that's quite an opportunity for Angela to sit up there and get, get the credit in the place as well. Yeah, absolutely. And, and, but we know we've got work to do. But I think what hopefully you can see from this, you will hear from that in, in much support is that we are, we are addressing the recommendations that come out of each, each individual report as we, as we see them. And we are moving forward and hopefully we'll certainly be in a better position when we've reviewed as twenty-five, twenty-six, or it may still be limited, but I think we'll be moving towards um, reasonable and we'll want to move on to get substantial insurance in the future. That's the aim and that's the goal. The, the understanding of governance issues and, and the, and the question, but I'll let, well, yes.
Thank you. Um, if I pick up on page seventy-eight of your papers, um, the introduction there, this is the, uh, internal audit annual report twenty-four, twenty-five, that's financial year ending the thirty-first mark, twenty-five. The, the purpose of an internal audit opinion is to provide an independent objective assessment of the council's risk management, control and governance arrangements. Um, assurance to senior management, the resources board on the overall advocacy and the effectiveness of these arrangements. Um, is what is laid out in the remainder of the report. Uh, the basis for the res- uh, resources board to assess the council's internal control, environment and to identify how the authority is actually progressing. The opinion's based on the outcome of our internal audit work, uh, the follow-up of audit recommendations, uh, work with any other assurance providers of which we've been aware of throughout the year. Um, and engagement with senior management, external audit and the risk management function, they've all fed into the report here. Um, as Paul's already said, the overall audit opinion is limited assurance for this financial year, which means there are presently significant weaknesses in governance, risk management and the control which could jeopardise the achievement of objectives. Uh, that said, uh, there is a lot of work being done behind the scenes to get things chowed up and moving. And I know a number of recommendations are partway through being implemented, if not fully there as yet. Um, moving over to page eighty, uh, you can see now, I won't go through them individually. You can see that there's individual, um, points of which the opinion's been based on, so the changing risk environment, significantly clear enough, stat for example. Uh, the implementation of the new financial management system, which Claude mentioned. And so I won't go through all that, because it's all in the papers, presumably if everybody's read that. Uh, one thing I will just pick up on is on page eighty-one of your papers. Um, internal audit operating accordance with the public sector internal audit standards. And that's how this has been, uh, work's been undertaken and the report's been prepared against those standards. Um, in order to meet those standards, we undertake an annual, um, kernel assessment, uh, quality assurance and improvement programme uh, within CMAP. And further to that, we have, um, a five-year external assessment in EQUA, where externally assessed. Our last one was in October twenty-two and we were generally conformed, which in actual fact is the top one. Doesn't sound very exciting, but generally conformed, but of the three that there actually is, uh, that's where we are with that. Uh, and the next assessment, I believe, is due in October twenty-seven. Uh, the remainder of the report just lays out the summary of the audit work which we've undertaken in the year and then the open recommendations, uh, which we're still waiting for the resolution of. Um, I won't go through, um, all of that in detail. It's all laid out there before you.
Castle Simpson.
Thank you, Chair. A, a question first of all, right. When was the risk management, um, report undertaken?
It was undertaken during the year. It's only recently been finalised. I think it's only the last few months it's actually been finalised. Um.
November one. I think, I think.
That would be in the programme.
November twenty-four, I think. How many members of this board, only meetings of this board have they had since November, Chair?
Okay.
Right. Did nobody think it was important enough getting a finding of no insurance at any one of those meetings? So they might have told us that? I mean, I can't say. I think it's the, the rise of it. You get to any that says no assurance, and it goes through three meetings of the board. Wait, how, how can I have any confidence in this process if it's going to take three meetings before somebody decides to tell us we have no assurance?
Thank you. Martin.
That actual report's only been finalised since the last committee. So the last resources committee, that report was still open, it hadn't actually been finalised at that point. It's actually in the late progress report, which has been presented at this committee. So it's, it's in the opinion because we know about it at this point and because we're aware of it. But the actual report's only just been finalised and the recommendations and the details of that are in the latter report, which is being presented.
I'm, I'm confused, my chair. I've been given two answers. You can please November and it's going to.
I didn't say it was complete. I said it started in November. So, so that, that was when the audit was undertaken. But it's been, it's not been completed until, as Martin says, um, since I arrived. So. Um, so, so it was, it was in process when I arrived in, in April. And I finalized the affair with, um, with CMAP. So I, I can't obviously answer what happened between November and, uh, and April. But what I can say is when I picked it up, I've worked with CMAP, I've taken two management teams and it's come here as quickly and went to the first board, I.
Well, let, let me ask aside a different question. Um, given that these reports take some time to be processed, when is it clear enough that there was no assurance?
Uh, well, from, from my perspective, uh, in April, when, when I was presented with the report, so I think we met, um, mid-April, and it was, that was our first meeting. So that was the first time it came to me. I obviously need to then take that through management team and, and, and then bring here. That, that's what I've done. I don't believe there's been a resource for in, in between them.
Can I just, so one of the things that has slightly hampered CMAP over the last period of time, have they been obtaining information? Is, is some of that delay from November to April, to when it's picked up there, um, information not necessarily being forthcoming, or was it slowing coming through? Is that, or were you asking for information and the fact that perhaps it wasn't there and for you to see? So you've obviously got the no assurance rating, but, um, perhaps delaying coming to you, or were you waiting things? Is what I'm asking. I'm saying, you know, were we slow in responding?
We don't report the reports in final until we've actually had the response from management in respect to the recommendations and, and the matters which are being raised there. Um, as I said, the report went, uh, went out in draft. It was in a while until we actually got a response to it, since Paul's been imposed. It's actually responded to quite a few audit reports in quick succession, which we were delayed in getting responses to prior to then. So, yeah.
So when was the draft, Chair?
This is a draft, isn't it?
The draft that went to management team.
Draft that went to management team would have been, um, late, late April. May.
And can I just be assured, Chair, about what is the process when there is such a deviser finding? And I'm concerned about limited, well, I have to say, but no assurance, that, yeah.
No, I understand me.
I I just don't think it's good enough, honestly, it's not good enough. And particularly when this is a report that was originally supposed to take place in twenty three, twenty four. So, you know, I'm getting zip confidence here.
So through the chair, so so hopefully you'll get more confidence when Matt's gone through the work that we're doing on this management team. It's away from no, no assurance. I completely agree. I I'm not going to sit here and say I'm happy with no assurance, I'm absolutely not. And and I will say it's the first no assurance report I've ever had. And now I'd like to argue this is not my report, but clearly it is because I'm sitting in the chair. What I will say is Martin's absolutely right, every audit that, every audit report that's come across my desk, that's been done. I've done the management responses and sent it back and they are now here being reported. It should not take from November to to now to get a report done. And I'm not going to argue that 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 is the case. What I will say is that won't happen in future because the reports will be done once the management responses are available. I don't do them all. And there are some good examples which we've, which we've just discussed, but that doesn't make up for those ones that are not done properly. The ones in my area and the ones that I can have influence and control over. I will give everything in my power to make sure that they compete in time fashion. And all I can do is apologize that that's not happened previously.
And, Chair, that is all genuinely assured, and I should make it abundantly clear, I'm not going through a witch's tale here and trying to attack individuals. Particularly when the individuals have changed. My concern is process, not personalities.
Absolutely, yes.
Can I say, I don't, I absolutely don't feel attacked, I absolutely understand the point and you're absolutely right. I don't, I don't disagree with with any of it, I will do what I can to work with the, with the whole board to make sure that what we're bringing to you. And and hopefully, when you've heard what Matt has to say, you will be even more assured that we're moving in the right direction in that, in that particular area. There are other areas we need to work on, but clearly, an audit with no assurance is the one that's going to be in focus and in spotlight. And that is the reason Matt sat behind us today to present the work that's been done. So we can say this was a low point and now you've moved on from that point already. Because we've got a strategy, a policy, we've got a framework and we've got a register. So all of those things are now in place of stealing that's done. But only so that hopefully you can see when that's been through that, that that assurance that you started to get will grow even more. That's why, that's why, that was the intention of previous reports. You've got to see the low bit first, don't point be going, oh, this is what I'm doing with money. No, by the way, we've got, we've had a zero assurance, because that's, that appears to me to be correct. I'm I'm being open and honest about that, and then want to set out where we're moving to. That's the, that's the process, hopefully you'll see that we have now process around that area.
Thanks, Chair, I generally, I would be delighted to be assured. A key part of that for me is that going forward, I would expect the board at its first available meeting to be advised of any findings which are other than satisfactory.
Absolutely, and Paul and I have spoken about that, Paul and I meet. And and, you know, we've talked particularly about risk management and governance. And I don't think you'd be surprised to hear that. So, you know, those those processes using C M A, using R S N has moved things on and we'll hear more about that. Although we've got, gone on still all of that standard and we'll move on to today's report, you know. But yeah, we are, we are talking about that, it's priority, it's top focus at the moment between us, isn't it?
And I think if if I might, Chair, so so I I'm assured, so I've worked with C M A and R S N in another authority. So the fact that that infrastructure is is in place and starting to work gives me as the one five one some assurance. So hopefully collectively, we can reflect that to you. The point about understanding at the earliest possible opportunity, I agree, and that and that will happen. So where where we have reports, as soon as the management responses and the management team have seen it, we. Through the chair, I think it's probably the 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 best way to make sure that information gets gets to you. And so hopefully there will be less of them.
Thank you, Councilor.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I mean, just just delve into some of the the family of detail because I have an I T background. One of the things that really concerns me is the limited assurance on business continuity. Obviously, we rely on our systems to deliver services to our residents, to provide all of the things that we as, we as a local authority provide. But also to collect cash and also, and it worries me that we have limited assurance, that the risk, the risk has been identified significant, moderate. You know, there were nine actions, yet none of them have been, as a percentage, if you look at all the other actions, other things have been done. But in that business continuity space, if I'm reading the report correctly, you know, zero percent of recommendations closed. Now, I know I T takes time, takes a bit longer, and having a robust business continuity plan is challenging. But for me, that's really critical because if we can't operate as a council, as an authority, then that's a one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's the one, Nick.
Thank you, Chair, I've got a bit of a list of things there, a couple of little quibbles first. On page seventy three, with reference to the financial management system implemented, there's a reference to I C D R. What is it?
Me.
Okay. Can we make sure that our conclusions are explained? And they are, these are public documents that should be understandable by the public.
Yes, we can, can't we, Amanda? But yeah, the interim corporate director of resources is what it, is what it stands for.
Thank you.
And I'm.
Otherwise, it's a bit mouthful, isn't it?
It seems, well, I am, yes, I'm, I'm bristling with it. And because I, I read that and and thought, pretty sure I didn't write. So, so yes, we'll, we'll make sure that doesn't happen in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, I echo Councilor Watson's points about the business continuity, it's a bit of a mess. I mean, three of those actions have been over a year past, even the latest revised action date. One thing I did find a bit, I wouldn't say confusing, but. Yeah, something that could be improved in the in the report maybe is that in that list of outstanding actions where we've got the management response. I think it'll be helpful to know when was the last time that we actually had a response on. And to then, if, you know, maybe we had a response when it was originally raised, we had nothing, or maybe we all were, right?
Yeah.
And it's hard to distinguish that.
Yeah, and there's something I think in the recommendations in the.
It was in the programme.
So within the progress report, I think this is. But once a year, two reports will start together, most of them see the progress report, and the progress report has do order recommendations and and the latest positioning on those. And what you see is the picture for the whole year of twenty fifteen five, which is kind of the past. But those recommendations will still sit if they're not completed in the in the progress report. Martin will talk about those in in the next report and hopefully some of those will be made up, some wide, they're not all being done. And some I think, some of them have.
Yeah, there was the possibility that with the time it gets to the progression report, which was written about six weeks, three months after that. The main audit opinion report, that things may have been addressed. Then obviously the audit opinion report is a snapshot at the time of where it is at the outgoing end of the year. And it was then ahead of eternal audit, ahead of the partnership that was actually responsible for the council last year, the internal audit plan. It's his opinion report that I'm presenting tonight, whereas the progress report is my report that I've got together from the work that I'm undertaking. This time next year, it could be my opinion report because obviously I've been the person imposed throughout the year that's actually delivered the plan and managed it.
Thank you.
I think, through Chair, just to respond to Castle's point on our light speed as well, I think it's well made. And this is the leaders group, and I think it is something that we we do need to, we do need to look at, both from a. Business continuity perspective, but also from a functionality perspective in terms of, you know, we do lots of time working, how easy that is. I think we need to 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 have that, or you should be at the cost of review anyways. And but I think we need to, to get some input to see what's in there. Those points have been well made here and in other places, I think we need to, we need to recognize that in the information about this.
Thank you.
Okay, and all of that kind of links, I think this one has been as well, really, so. At the next point I had is hopefully, a simple one, quick win. Under the business continuity, we've got the, which one is it? Recommendation seven, which is the weakness around no formal governance training has been provided to members of the resources board. And and the management responses that will try and arrange some training, which would definitely be beneficial. But the recommendation is actually that we recommend that the council elected members are provided with the relevant C I P F A audit committee guidance. Seems like that would be relatively simple just to share that guidance.
I was looking through down.
That should be.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it for guidance is is available and I think some longstanding members, this is what I think we have that we can do with. There's a lot of new members.
Yeah, and and I'm, I'm happy, I think colleagues behind me have probably been lobbying about, you know, being prepared to come and get some training. Obviously, within the reports that, and particularly that's report, that, you know, does bring some training in terms of risk management. But I think from an audit committee perspective, I'm more than happy to bring that, that's it for document and either do that as training or as a formal item. I would be to.
I think we could do that as a supplementary.
Yeah.
Session, because then people come, you know, it's not in board business and people have, you know, we can extend that and open up to people that sub sometimes. It wouldn't hurt many members of the boards, not just this board, to understand that. So we could have it as an open session.
So in in other places, formal audit training is mandatory. So I've, on audit committee, that I've had, and it's actually been based, made it mandatory in that, that is around. Obviously, understanding the role of the committee, but also particularly the committee and it is the exec board here that approves the accounts. So for that training around that is is important as well, so.
Absolutely. And the final point I have is more of a general one, really, and we covered how, you know, there's been struggle for. A lack of progress on these, I mean. Comment on the financial system seems to imply that part of the reason there was that there wasn't any resourcing finance to support that project. And I mean, do we have sufficient resources in this or do we need to man up to?
I I think.
Deliver these actions.
So we, so we, on on the actions, I think, I think we do. And I think the the issue that we've had is when we take on additional projects. And when you try to resource those from within an area that's already under pressure in terms of its normal business. To be able to to function, operate that is is something that needs to be considered when you're doing the, you know. And when you're setting the project up and that, I think, is what didn't happen at the time. And I'm very clear about projects, you have an S R O, you have a project manager, you have a project team. They need on a regular basis that they create a milestone plan, you check against the milestones. And I don't think that's the way the project functioned and operated, and that's what we need to make sure going forward that that we get right. So it is about resourcing, but to Councilor Simpson's point, three or four times so far, it's about process. Having the right process in place and then following those processes.
I think just to add to that, as in what Paul and I spoke about, is about, is it related to the new system? It's about having your processes, processes identified and reworked before you embark on the new system, rather than trying to do the two things at the same time.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, but we are where we are and they've moved on hugely from that, and Paul is looking at his results and structure of that, and we've had conversations around that, so.
My work is trying to go where an S A P is laid at the moment and I keep trying to say it's more about the process, the ability side of it is a lot of work, but business changes following.
Yes, the people, the people will use the system the way the board used it and she showed them a different way. You know, it's, you don't change by changing the system, you change by training people. That's, and that's been part of the issue. Okay, has everyone asked their questions they have on that report? So I'm happy to invite Martin to respond, I'm glad he's such thorough information on that. So I'm happy to move this, I think, to share.
Sure. If like, I am broadly content with what I heard. But, you know, our experience of internal audit over the past several cycles of councils being. And ebbing and flowing between not good enough and hoping we're going to get good enough and a site that we may be, and then we go back to first place. And so within the recommendation, I'd like to see something that says if we get findings of limited or no assurance. Anything other than satisfactory and better, that that's reported to the first available meeting of the board. And and I would like to think that we weren't going to wait a year for the next internal audit report to have the progress report on these. Outstanding actions that have been identified, so you can, the audit recommendations are shown from. The numbers are all typed over, I can't read it, but I'd like, I'd like a regular update to to understand that that's being done. So particularly in respect of the audit reports that should have been done a year ago and we are.
Yeah, we we do get updates in the cycle, so yeah, that's that's easy to add to that. And so we put that the work to progress, the limited assurance outcome is also noted, but I can see maybe that any. Draft report that is looking like it has a no assurance or limited assurance outcome is communicated, not just at the first available board. Because it is that, but, you know, through through the chair to to the resources board so that there's, you know, in. We're not waiting for the next cycle of meetings to to understand the actions that are going to be taken on that significant risk.
Thanks.
Martin.
Yeah, I will just add that the report I have just presented is the annual audit opinion report. Obviously, other than the audits which have concluded since the previous resources board. Everything that was completed audit wise, recommendation wise prior to that, has been in a progress report which has come to this committee already. Likewise, any open and outstanding recommendations, they're not reported annually, they're reported in each progress report which comes to this committee. And the the next report that I'm actually going to present has actually got all the open, moderate risk recommendations at the end of it. And any low risk recommendations which have been twelve months past the original implementation date.
I I appreciate it, Chair, and I I think it's not necessarily an annual report, it's, it's not as frequent as I would hope, given significant findings. And I'm here, going back to the, I think it was Martin that said, do you mean? Business continuity, we've really got five critical risks non progress, and there are others like that. It's, I'm I'm quite happy, you know, to wait a bit longer on moderate to low risk, critical risk, I think we need a regular update.
Yeah, and and that's what Martin's just said that we will have, and because we do have, that's what will be in the progress report. What the annual report is for, is annual report is for the year that you need to submit with your, to your external auditors, that you've had some internal audits. There's two parts to that, so we get an annual report so we can satisfy that requirement to the external audit team that we've had internal audit and what risks that's flagged up. And what we've done about them, but then on a regular basis to this board, there is a progress report that will have those actions and that where we are against that. So that'll be a regular update.
Every board, being thick, but every board, every board.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, you will, I think you will get what you're asking for and it is, the structure is there now. I think what we, you're talking about is before we had C M A, we didn't get that on a regular enough basis, but we have the structure now to achieve that.
Process.
Councilor Watson.
Yeah, so just, so just put it practically in financial terms, the annual report's like your balance sheet snapshot in time. Yeah. At the end, and your progress report, your profit loss that you're going to see every month for every board, every board.
Do you know where you're at?
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Happy.
I I think officers should appreciate, I've got two response that they start.
About it.
Well, I think you brought somebody who.
All right.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I've proposed that from the chair, we've added a point C. Do I have a second for that? That's the finish and thank you. All in favour? Thank you. Lovely. Moving on to the progress report, so this is the progress report that then is following of the most, this is Martin's report, not a report he's presenting that somebody else. following on them. This is Martin's report, not a report he's presenting that somebody else has from his previous internal audit scene. So our recommendation, Stephen, is that the internal audit progress report is noted. Okay. So to be right, do you want to just give a bit of a praise on that, Martin?
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good figure for it. If you turn to page one hundred and two of your papers, you'll find the audit dashboard. The main dashboard of this report, this identifies where we are with respect to the twenty five, twenty six audit plan. Now, if we go to the top left front progress, the first three parts of that, the eighteen, the seven and the eleven, they've shown that we've got potentially thirty six percent of the plan either underway or complete against this financial year so far. There's twenty five percent at the bottom which is to commence. That's where where it's been allocated to auditor and they have started to scope and started to make movement on that. The thirty nine percent audit remain in the twenty five, twenty six plan, which aren't due to commence until quarter three, quarter four. Next one along to the right, you've got the jobs completed in the period. You can see there is the four jobs. One of them, we've been discussing, which is the no assurance one, which is being brought to this committee in its entirety. And then there's two limited assurance and a reasonable assurance. There we count in a few pages which I'll come on to. Customer satisfaction is the one to the right of that. Now, I think the important thing to state here is CMAP have only actually become a partner, sorry. The council have only become a partner of CMAP as of the first of April this year. So we need to get a number of audits completed and issued in final to get the customer satisfaction questionnaires back. I know there has been a couple issued already, but we've not had responses from people yet, which is probably a timing issue, to be honest, from the date that we needed to obviously submit the report ready committee from where we are now. But we are hoping that we should have some information in that. And hopefully by the next committee, so we can provide some some data there.
If I might interject, at least two of those are mine. So I will complete those and make sure that they get done because Susanna has that has responded. So I hold my hands up on that. So and and say that actually the satisfaction that certainly I'm seeing through through your audit work is, you know, it will be good or excellent. So so you can take that back, won't you?
Thank you. And moving to the charts at the bottom, the one on the left is recommendations movement in period. And I think it's probably been identified by the committee already. Thirty nine recommendations have been made since the last resources board. Only twenty five have been closed. So the number of recommendations is increasing quite rapidly. They are being made quicker than they are being resolved and dealt with by management. So that's probably something which we need to focus on or we need to look at when we get to them at the tail end of this report. Recommendations chart in the middle shows that there's thirty nine recommendations with action, sorry, thirty three recommendations with action due, which is the total of the red columns there. They're ones where we've chased officers because our expected implementation date has been passed and we have not had an update. So we cannot provide with the information of how they are progressing and what's being done against them because we don't know. All of the moderate risk and high recommendations where that's the case have been recounted in this report for your attention. So you can obviously focus on those. Delayed action due, but ones where we have had a response initially and it's provided us with a revised date for when the issue is going to be addressed. And again, that revised date has passed and we still haven't heard anything. So in total, there is forty two that we haven't heard anything back from officers. That's quite a lot where we CMAP deliver services for a number of authorities and and that is very high where we're not getting responses on those. The recommendation overview just gives you an idea of how long recommendations have gone past their original expected action date and not actually been addressed. So again, there you can see there's a number three months past, up to six months past, twelve months past. And there are actually nine moderate risk recommendations which are over twelve months past the original date for when we would have expected them to be implemented by. Likewise, all the moderate ones are at the back of this report. So you can see what all of the matters and issues are there. Moving on to page one hundred and three in your papers, which is progress on all these assignments. That just identifies the the audits from this financial year twenty five, twenty six and the brought forward audits from previous years, which we're still looking to conclude. Most of those are out in draft. There's a couple which aren't, but most of them are out in draft and we are hoping that they should all be concluded. The brought forward assignments, that is for the next committee. What I will say with respect to the twenty five, twenty six audit assignment, there isn't much movement on that. And I'm working with Paul presently to try and get a number of these audits off the ground and progressed. At the moment, we're not too bad, but we're still completing the brought forward audits. But very soon we're going to be dried up if we don't get officers coming back to us and playing ball with respect to getting fieldwork booked in as well to actually act in those those audits.
So come back and just to comment on that then, Paul, is that a plan you've got, action plan that's that you've got management to allocate audits?
So we've already, we've already discussed it both at management team and extended management team. That we've got to, we've got to have responses back to audit in a in a timely manner. And Martin will highlight and identify when it's happening or what it is. And I'll try to unblock some of that personally. Me going around and saying you need to do the responses is probably the best way of getting that. So I'd hope is that after a while, I won't need to. And I think if you include some of this, and I should have said this right at the beginning. The council and officers within the council are experiencing audit in a very different way than they've experienced it in in the past. And there is a I was going to say there's a reaction. I think it's probably a lack of
Culture or shame.
A lack of this. And it is a big cultural change. You're absolutely right. And that's it. You know, we need, this is for for us, this is giving us so much information that we need to work with and respond to. And we need to make sure that we're doing that, get those audits done in a timely manner. So.
Do you have an audit action tracker with owners and timeframes that you've set? You're using as a tool?
Yeah. We do. And we're also having vinyl for meetings, Paul, now to identify where there are blockages and the priorities need to be addressed and sorted. And we're keeping him informed so he can obviously chase officers accordingly. This is mainly the the delays in getting fieldwork progressed that's involved in this problem. This isn't necessarily the draft reports, the final. This is actually getting the audit undertaken in the first place.
Absolutely. And that's been one of the issues, I think, in having very delayed information before. And I think the system we've we had before wasn't adequate. And, you know, it was an internally internal auditor. And it was just too much for the person that we had and just resource wise and therefore everything slipped. Nothing was pushed forward. And there was a culture of not having to respond because everything was always behind and we were years behind. And we'd look at plans and we'd get a plan. And that's why perhaps some of the questions are what they are at the moment because you get a plan, but there's no confidence that that's actually what would be delivered. Now with CMAP, there's a wide range of resource, a bigger group of people that can tackle that and actually different expertise in the different parts of the internal audit. And so actually, there's, there's a lot more opportunity to get that right, I think. But we've got to respond as an authority to that now and 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 have that and go through that period of change to respond and actually know that that's expected. And and it's it's not a choice. Councillor Watson, you want to come in there?
Yeah, please, Chair, if I could. And and absolutely spot on. I was very much similar to what you said. And it's great to see the charts like that. I mean, it's unacceptable that there are nine moderate risks or even even low risks that are six to twelve months old. And I think it goes back to the chairs, chairs, it's a culture thing. There needs to be implications. And this is really good reason. And actually, I'm sort of over twelve months. I can't think of any reason why you would not respond to an audit request. You know, that's twelve months old. I think we need assurances that actually there are going to be repercussions. Because because we know, and I know I always get told, we're not in the private sector, but in the private sector, that just wouldn't judge within that. Because culturally, people would be made to to kind of do what they're being asked to do. I think we need that culture change.
And and that's what we're seeking. It's not acceptable in in any scenario. I I I don't find it acceptable. And that's why collectively we we are trying to stay, we are dealing. It it will take some time, but we are dealing with it. And, you know, there are capacity issues within the authority and in some areas some quite significant capacity. And we need to resolve some of those so that we can do some of these things because people will often look at audits and think, well, you know, that's, that's my lowest priority. Now, from my perspective, it's the highest priority.
It's such a work plan, isn't it, really?
Tells us where we are, tells us what we need to do. It helps us. You know, audits are not not there to criticize and they're there to be proactive. And all of the discussions and meetings I've had with Martin and the auditors from CMAP, that that is the approach. The approach is proactive, it is positive. And it is trying to be helpful. And for me, when I read the reports, and even though the reports are not good, they are helpful in terms of how we need them to be where they are to to be better. That, you know, needs to be culturally embraced. You're right, Chair. It is about that.
And how we direct resource, how, you know, how we we manage our priorities and how things then move around that priorities. I had Councillor Gilmore. And Martin.
Okay, I actually work in the private sector as a new audit sign. And my experience, a lot of it, I'm just making it for you with regards to this. A lot of the reluctance to get the clarity out of the actions that have been highlighted is down to the lack of experience and understanding of the audit process, that it's not a witch hunt, that's an improvemental. So my question would be to the team, are we actually taking on some additional work to train familiarized people with the internal audit process to make them understand importance of the fact that it is actually improve that activity and not a witch hunt?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is what Paul's tackling. And that's that part of that culture change with management team that we've talked about. And we have talked about that quite a lot with the movement to CMAP. It's one of the goals.
And and so Martin's very new, whilst Martin's been at CMAP for a while, he's new to being our audit audit lead. And what we've discussed is that we need to to bring Martin to do some training with those people who who are receiving orders to understand exactly those points. I couldn't couldn't agree more with everything you said. So yes, absolutely. We need to get that message across. And the best person to do it is is Martin with with me.
We have discussed it already. It's something that we're looking to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I just be sure? I'm saying so on the back of that, I mean, I saw we culturally, I I work in automotive and aerospace. Unfortunately, we had these issues fifteen, twenty years ago. And it's only when the owners was pushed back onto the process owners, the departments and said, look, guys, this is an improvement activity. This helps you. But the culture changes now, we're really, you know, which I've just finished four days of auditing. So but the change now, we're coming out with maybe one or two minor non performances in an industry where it's in the sky, it's on the ground. So, I mean, it shows the change of being familiar with the training, as it were, and the understanding and the logic of the audit activity. It's made such a difference across the board. So I hope you don't mind.
He's really helpful. And we need to be challenged to do that. I think I thought one reflection that I'm going to embarrass Angela again. And one reflection is that where we've got continuity and where we've got really good understanding of our processes and how things work, the the audits are are good. And you are getting offices from himself there and, you know, and housing is a good example. What we've got to do is make sure that that's happening while possibly is it that's how it needs to happen and that's how it needs to be. So.
I think that that comes down to department is quite heavily regulated. And so you're very used to meeting the needs of regulation, aren't you? I know a lot of local authority work is regulation, but particularly housing, highly regulated sector, part of the sector, isn't it? Much more, they see it much more as a useful thing than a something about to get done almost. So Martin, you wanted to come in?
Yeah, I think for context of this progress report, as I've said, the council have only just joined CMAP on the first of April. This is the first full progress report and the first time this committee will have actually seen the dashboard. There are a lot of legacy issues in there which have been ongoing for a number of years. This can clearly be seen, obviously, by the recommendations overdue. I basically coordinated and pulled all of that information together and reported it all in a glut to this committee. That information has probably not been there previously and not been counted in this way previously. So it's not been traded and it's not been put into that context. I'd like to think that it could be a better position going forward and recommendations, numbers will start to come down and so forth. But obviously, when we're presenting it for the first time from a situation which has been allowed to get to where it is now, I think it will always be quite shocking in the first instant that people's look at it and to say, it is that wake up call.
Councillor Simpson.
Contrary to what I've been saying before, Chair, I think this is very encouraging of course, and it's shown me at least that we are making progress on it. And it's very welcome. And, you know, I do appreciate the work that's being done here. The slight negative say is that I think some of these recommendations should have been in the confidential section rather than the public section. I'm not, I'm not passing over, I think you can be providing this. There's one reference in here to say things at least, which are much, much rather than we have made up.
Okay, maybe we need to have a look at that and the practical elements of recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One place.
That might expedite it being sorted. Sweet message. Like being the move. But are there any other questions on the progress report? I have a proposer then for this. Thank you, Councillor Barnett, seconded by Councillor H. Field. All in favour? Thank you. I think that's been really, really helpful. We're comprehensive and I think we're on the right track really in terms of it. Thank you. If you need to do nothing, please feel free.
Well, I will be supportive. Somebody, yeah.
You can tell when you wait seven years for an interview.
No, not to, ah, yes, agenda item eleven, the internal audit standards report.
Yes, this is going to be a really quick one. I will whip through it.
I'll ask a question, yeah.
We've got this list out.
I just want to bring, there's new standards which have actually been issued this year. Came out, well, it came out in January twenty four, but they've actually come into effect on the ninth of January twenty five this year. Relevant to the public sector from the first of April this year. Previously, as I said within that audit opinion, we were abiding by the relevant standards at the time, which is the public sector internal audit standards. Is now the new global internal audit standards, which we have to abide by and we will be abiding by going forward. Now, obviously, with them being global internal audit standards, they are worldwide for any organisation, public and private sector and for any country within the world. Subsequently, there is an application note which has been put out for the local or for local public sector auditing, which actually identifies what are the additional requirements or exemptions from the global internal audit standards for that particular field. And also within the standards on page four of seven of this report, I'm not sure which page it is within your papers, it identifies the new five domains of the global internal audit standards. Well, domain three was looking at the governance of the internal audit function. And that's that actually is relevant to the particular local authority where the audit audits are taking place. The other four domains which are there, one, two, four and five are relevant to ourselves, to internal audit, to deliver and to act upon. And historically, when we're assessed, that's what we're assessed on. Domain three will actually be the local authority. And likewise, there is six, the code of conduct, their code of practice for governance of internal audit in the UK local government, which identifies how the local authority should be addressing internal audit and how they should be going forward with it. So essentially, you've got the global standard which give the the overall standard. It's an application note which gives slight variations to it for which internal audit needs to follow. And then it's code of practice for governance for the local authorities to follow against those standards for how they need to implement their control and their governance against domain three. The rest of it is all there. I've included the code of practice, I've included the application. The rest of it is all there. I've included the code of practice, I've included the application note, and then the rest of it is a report.
Thank you.
Just one slightly sarcastic question. I, I, you know, I have no comment on on what these are made, but I've read through some of them. They they seem encouraging and comprehensive. And it's just something more how long is this? Because that is a question of how, is it adopted? So it's like the US World Series where it applies partially or or is it global?
It is global. It is across the world. I think there's so many multinational companies now which operate in so many different countries around the world. And they were finding that the individual regulations, standards, whichever country or whichever continent they're operating on, it were different, they're varied, they're varied, they were, you know, they couldn't sort of draw comparisons between them. So now they've come up with a global standard, so it's being done the same way throughout, obviously, all with a slight variation to do with the application note and code of practice and so forth. And so they've now got that comparison that they can look at one company and see how it's performing in several different continents and how that is operating in comparison with each other.
That sounds like a great ambition.
And on that note, you're happy to, absolutely. Thank you very much, Council of Simpson. Do you have a second? That's awesome. Pauline Vaver. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Nancy. And that's been really, really good seeing you. Thank you. And moving on to gender items twelve, we've got our second guest of the evening. We have Matt Sunfree here from RSM. And we've got our strategic risk management summary report. And obviously, we've got some recommendations that that mainly around noting and that our approach to risk management is outlined in our policy strategy approach. So, Matt.
Yeah, I've stolen that from Matt. It was already said.
Just gonna let me launch it, right? Thank you very much. Well, good evening, everybody. Nice to meet you. See you all at least. Yeah, sorry to have thrown the kitchen sink at you and the information I provided. I think there was forty five pages of intense letters of text. I hope you should like present. I like producing nice summary diagrams that you can look at. Hopefully in the future, that's what we can see in, so it's a little bit more consumable. So let me start from the beginning. So obviously, the council, we had a problem with risk management. And we were asked to come in and then help restructure what is in place, put stuff in place that wasn't there. So consider this the start and not the end. I think everything that's been talked about today, listening to yourselves, councillors, I think I've heard the words, culture change, accountability, ownership, responsibility. And I suppose going forward, my role, and as Paul and Martin probably know, and I have to draw on this so you know this, from working with both these individuals, our other authorities, Martin extensively, other local authorities, my role is to make all the stuff that you've been talking about as visible as early as possible through reporting on risk. Okay, so what you've got at the moment is a set of key component parts that will make up how we take risk management forward in the council. And yes, you can take a look at Strategic Risk Register and I'm sure you could find things and ask questions around it. And I will discuss those with management. My role is facilitate, make it visible, provide some change, put some rigor into the process in order that I can bring things to the table as early as possible. If you consider my role, if you think about assurance, which we've heard mentioned a couple of times, and assurance is, you know, confidence, evidence-based confidence. The biggest evidence-based constant you get is from Martin, because he's completely independent and does detailed reviews of whatever is going on. And he'll be using my risk work to drive his agenda. I provide a a second line of assurance, which is to provide that check and challenge with over management. And management provide that first line of assurance, which is to manage the risks that they identify and that they believe are being faced. In the future, this resources board, I can imagine, once we get risk management going, we'll have a situation where you might bring officers into this meeting to ask questions in a reasonable manner. I I think that the word wickshun was used earlier, and we don't want a wickshun, but we do want it to be, yeah, don't don't worry, it's no problem. But we do want to make sure that we drive continuous improvement. And I see risk management or the risk management that I'm involved in as being part of that. Yes, I want to find out where we might be weak and we need to protect the council better from loss of harm. But equally, my bigger agenda is to drive continuous improvement. Hence, we developed a strategic approach, which is to work with the senior management team to ensure that we can push forward both improvements in internal control and also strategic. And and that's largely my role. And admittedly, I've thrown a lot of documents out there to read through and so many documents, you can ask lots and lots of questions. So that that's quite a good thing. I'm going to take it the fact that you've read the documents. You start with a summary report that largely describes what we've done to get to a point. Then you've got a couple of items that are or a few items that are quite important as part of that. One being the risk management policy and strategy, which actually is based on best practice, I can assure you of that. The second thing is actually a key component document for a risk management framework. We try to take the risk management policy in turn. It's something that people might understand. And then the strategic risk register. Now, the strategic risk register consists of a set of risks related to the twenty three twenty seven framework plan as it stands, which might hinder its achievement. Okay, we could look further with that plan start. In fact, the strategic risks could inform that plan. So it's like that, or it's a continual circle. So in the strategic risk register, I I think you've got actually thirteen strategic risks, which are key risks that the council are looking to manage and start off of. They will change and may change because one of the things that I bring to the table every six months is from RSM, an emerging risk report, which is based on our experiences drawn from working with boards across all organisations, provide challenge to management that regards how the council might be exposed to those. So I'm not going to talk anymore. I'd much prefer to just answer any questions you've got, you've got, and try to answer as best I can. And if I can't, I'll come back with something.
Thank you. I mean, thank you for being really comprehensive and and lots of bits on it.
Yeah, sorry. That's a lot to consume, yeah.
There is. One of the things, Martin, I was going to ask about was about these three things, strategic risks, whilst there are thirteen listed there. I was going to ask your view on whether or not you think they're the most comprehensiveness or whether or not you think we've got some real key emissions.
I could, I would say, as at the point at which that was prepared, I would say it was reasonably reflected of maybe the council felt risk strategic risks. If I was to bring in other items, you know, now now talking to Paul and talking to Martin, there are some other items that potentially exist. I think generally the control environment itself. And it's interesting when you reflect on the strategic risk register, because one of the things we did was with management, we got them to do a self-assessment of the effectiveness of the internal controls that or key controls that manage some of those risks. And as you can see, most of those are green, all right, which is contrary to probably what we see Martin talking about here. It was a self-assessment and we did that intentionally because it seems about appreciation of what these controls really mean. And Paul and I have chatted about this quite a lot about the fact that this is something, I think, working with senior team, looking at strategic register, those controls will be reflected on. Because what we're trying to get to is an early doors position where we understand if controls aren't working, not waiting for Martin to tell us, although there will be situations where he does tell us that controls don't work, but we think they do. You know, when we look at controls, we consider effectiveness of controls, we always look, does the control exist? And I think in some cases, management think, oh, we recognise that control, it must exist, therefore it's effective. But that's not the full picture. Is it being consistently applied and does it do what it's meant to do? There are three components in terms of whether a control is effective or not. So I think the more we work with management through the interventions that we'll provide over the next twelve months, that will become more established and we'll have a much more sort of robust process with regards to risk. In the, I haven't asked him a question yet. In the bottom, perhaps which one's really efficient?
You're the politician.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, let's face it, all right, I think there is an issue here around governance and control, which we need to address. And this is being evident through the conversation we're having in this resourcing board. I think if I was to take it more widely and look at some of the comparisons that are coming up now with other organisations we're working with, there is a really interesting one about societal change and staying on top of that. And societal change is not just about politics, it's about poverty, it's about access to health, it's about individuals, individual culture and stuff like that. And that's playing through into a lot of, well, particularly in local, as as local councillors, you're particularly feeling that because there is perhaps, there are, say, a slight distrust in institutions. And that's institutions both
Expectation.
Expectations and corporate business. So what does that lead to? That leads to pressure on members, board members. And this is, this is an emerging risk that I think we need to just stand on top of and be really aware of, the way we're involved, engaging stakeholders. So that's one that I'm seeing quite a lot more come through. So that's that's a really, that's a challenge.
I think, I think the answer is no.
In a succinct way.
In a succinct way. And and part of the, part of the reason for that is that this is a live document and it will change. If not daily, it will change regularly. So and the discussions that matter, the frequency that we review and refresh. When you do something for the for the first time, it's very rare that you get it completely right as well. So I think, you know, we we talked around some, some specific risks, we talked about climate change, should it be in, should it be in? And and I think we need to reflect on some of those, some of the things that have gone in and some of the things that. And you don't want fifty strategic risks, you know, thirteen's not bad. We've got fourteen and twelve equally could be the case. So I think, you know, that reflection needs to happen. And as Matt says, over a twelve-month period, we need to do that at least twice.
Yeah.
And and then I think you'll see the changes in the document, which, you know, I'd say this is green, but not green in a, in a rag-rag green, it's green in a very early stages. And, you know, we need to adopt it and and refresh it and and improve it. But I think a reasonable first step, I think I said right at the beginning, this takes us away from no assurance. Does it take us to to substantial or reasonable? Not not yet, I don't think. But hopefully, it shows a direction to travel, you know, in time, the time that Martin comes back and wants to audit risk management again, that we do get to that position where we've got at least reasonable assurance.
And I also think, again, for myself, action planning, about ownership and integration of those risks. And actually, if something is rated as red, what does that mean? What timeframe does that mean? We deal with that within, is it within eight weeks? Is it within three months? Is it within six months? What does red mean to us in terms of our significant risk? And and also, on rate that risk? You know, at what point are we communicating that that is a significant risk either to this board or to the executive board? And, you know, and how's that affecting our work planning? You know, if we have a significant financial risk or a significant governance risk, what does that mean? What does that look like? What action does that then generate from us as a as an authority? They're the, they're the things that for me, I mean, of course, it's not about putting it on the bit of paper, it's about actually what we're about to say.
Yeah, absolutely. It's really important that everything has an owner, so all of the reports you're saying, even coming to the capital one, everything has a name again to get the responsibility. So you and we can go back to that responsibility and say, well, that's not been done, you know, on the capital one. It's about, that's not been spent. And 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 to be able to then go back and, like I mean, Martin and Matt said, to to bring actually people into here to then be able to say, well, that's not been done how we've expected. If, how are we going to improve that in in future? Because it's not all about me and or or us, given that, you know, it's a housing and and resources committee. So mostly it will be Angela and myself who who come with reports. But actually, there are things that will need to be interrogated that are wider in the business.
You know, that covers all sections, doesn't it?
But you should always be able to see who that is. And whilst it's strategic and corporate, it still needs, it still needs an owner, an individual who's responsible for for doing that. This has it. And all of the things that I certainly will bring around finance will will have the same, mostly with Angela.
I've got Council Watson and Council Simpson.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I think one of the other things that's really good to have is this view, the strategic view. I always get noticed when we talk about strategic and strategies, like how far are you looking into the future? I I think you alluded to it, that I think an important part of this is we've got to keep a close eye on those macro things, the global things that happen, that have an impact on society fairly quickly, fairly rapidly. You know, Ukraine, Trump and those sort of things from that perspective. And how that then has an impact on the risk register. Because it's very easy, you know, it's very easy to keep going, you know, a strategic risk and it's over there. But if there's something that happens that has a real significant impact right here, right now, I think we need to also make sure that that's been our risk kind of radar to work.
Well, absolutely. And one I would point out for us is, you know, we we had this government change, then we had LGR. And that probably came from left field a little bit, and not completely. But, you know, to to the extent and the pace and the timeline on that probably did.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if I could just, a prime example of exactly that is, you know, our our local plan that looks at our housing development over a period of years, you know, we had five point one years or we've got five point one years, but we know the A five changes, what that risk. So it's something that that we didn't see coming that was part of our strategic plan, but suddenly changes our strategic plan, but from building houses.
Yeah. Chair, if I might, may I say, yeah, I certainly agree with Council Watson. You know, you that you use the the words radar and I'm sitting looking at my screen here at the emerging risk radar that RSM produce. And, you know, typically, one of those risks that we have in there is what we call most prevalent, I bought to talk about this a lot, is changing global priority sorting in new, you know, just a little more policy for regulations, effects of business. They will immediately play through into this council. And the other one, of course, is geopolitical change and instability. People think, oh, that's a very big macro risk that exists and has that affects, that all plays through. And that's where we as a council or a council managing team need to have that conversation. So in order that we can understand what implications are and what actions we need to put in place. And and that's a critical part of managing risk, responding to things of that.
Through, Chair, it's so, it's so important, it's so important that we that we get it right. Because this is, these are the foundations. This is, this is why everything sits off. And if the controls and and our actions and reactions to risk management are not in place, then all of the other things that we want to do, our aspirations, they won't happen. And and so, you know, hopefully you can see how seriously we we collectively are taking it. Because it isn't, it isn't unfall just be me, because.
No, it's a collective responsibility. We have our parts, our members.
Yeah, absolutely.
Particularly me.
Yeah.
Council Simpson, thank you, Cymon.
Thank you. I suppose my idea of answer to what is the biggest risk, it's always a risk we haven't yet solved. And and philosophically, this is sort of where I I often try and challenge myself with this. What is the prism that we're looking, looking at? Is it that sort of, if you like, internal, yesterday, corporate body? Or or is it that more global societalness is in place on us? And and, you know, I'm genuinely pleased with almost everything I've read. But I'm not really clear how are we defining risk? Is it the entire global risk, you know, food safety, energy security, that sort of stuff? Or is it within the authority? And I think they're both have a place. But I'd like, I'd like to be a little bit clearer on what we're trying to get at. And and in that.
Just to answer that a little bit, I think there's two parts to that. I think the risk to us as an authority is about one of the things we're looking to have the right internal control environment for, that we can manage, to be in our league to manage. But the things we've got to be mindful of in our risk registers, the impact of of things happening externally that affect our ability to control that internal environment. So for example, you know, with significant political instability in the world and causing, you know, increased dependency on defence spending potentially, takes money from government that they can't spend in other ways. So our funding gets reduced, so therefore it affects our internal environment. So there's a, there's a broader risk that we can't mitigate against. But that then creates an internal risk that we have to match. I think there's that.
Completely agreed. I would say probably anything you can do to mitigate against impact, you can't necessarily deal with it happening, but how do you respond to this, capable of mitigation? And and it's really in that context of looking at, sorry, I think it's one ninety three of two one eight, the risk scoring criteria. Because some of them look a bit loud. And, you know, value five, you only go as high as a hundred pounds plus. And I think you must have this, so that, you know, in in, obviously, my voice, you.
Like the leisure project.
It's not, but the sort of value five, it's going to be a higher number. And similarly, it's very likely to have a major stability, I would say, that can come to a certain extent, it's going to impact.
Um, and similarly, it's very likely to have a major stability, obviously, that they're going to go in backwards in some way. So it, it's fortuity rather than certainty that I'd be, be looking for. But I get all of it. I think it is positive. I, I equally get that this is working progress and inevitably, being me, I, I like a, a sort of reasonable data, when, when it's not working progress and when is it there? Knowing that it's never there, it's always. Uh, and if anybody ever says that this sort of stuff is there, then you just stop thinking about it, you know, you never get to that point. Um, but all, all of this generally is good. Um, and we look through these, these thirteen risks. Uh, I'm, my perception is that there are missing risks. Uh, but then that's the inevitability too. Everyone will look at it, think there are missing risks. But I, I'm generally encouraged by this suggestion that we do have, uh, at board any discussion over what they are and members can challenge what they are. Because we, it, it has to be an iterative process. And, and taking a lot of different views on what the risk is and what will I find in risk assessment is very hard. He's having people from different areas challenge, so that the iterative process goes forward. And, you know, it, it really is always, the biggest risk is the one you haven't thought about, I mean, you haven't prepared for, that really calls. And that's why I was saying, we got over fifty percent of, um, uh, where a holistic business continuity event occurs fail. Because planning was inadequate. Um, so, well, I think this is very good working progress. I think there are things to challenge in it inevitably, and I think that's a positive part of the process. So I, I welcome all of this and happy to propose that I can give you.
Thank you.
As long as it answers next week.
Thank you, councillor Simpson. I, I just would be like to say, before we move into councillor Barnet, how much it's moved on. And, um, but one of the other things I think we probably need to consider, and it's not just the likelihood and the impact, also the proximity. Uh, uh, that we are to that risk. So obviously that different, you know, that changes your, your appetite for risk, doesn't it? Or your, um, your ability to mitigate tension or what you need to prioritize first and how you make that, that list of thirteen. You know, you reorder them maybe and look at your work plan. But yeah, I think it's, it's a massive step forward.
Just, just a quick response to councillor Simpson's point. I absolutely agree. I think the, the key word for me is it will always be live, but it can be embedded. And I think in the minute it, it isn't. And what we'll seek to do over the next twelve months is to embed this process. And we are absolutely open to, to that challenge from, from, from members, from officers. Um, and, you know, we would certainly invite, I don't, I don't know what to do. If we can set up a member session to, to do that, I think that would be more than useful.
And, and I honestly don't think we should beat ourselves up with that. Because a significant part of the, of, of the economy is in that place. The fact that we've begun to recognize it and do something better about it is genuinely a big plus.
That's great to hear.
Thank you, councillor Paul.
Uh, there's some of this follows up from things others have, others have said. But one thing I did notice when I was going through the strategic risk register, uh, when I was looking at the inherent risk and the residual risk, um, uh, the controls that we've currently got, uh, you know, in quite a few situations, they do a good job of mitigating the likelihood of some of these risks. We don't seem to have any controls that limit potential impacts of that. Admittedly, that might be the more difficult aspect to, to manage, but it does seem like that we haven't got anything in that to go out of talk.
Do you have a response? Yeah, yeah. Okay, welcome to a really big discussion point. If I have one of my colleagues here, Richard McHugh, Chair of Institute Risk Management in Northern Ireland and Scotland. And we, we have this ongoing debate around whether controls just reduce likelihood and impact always remains the same. There are some instances, I am sure, where impact can be reduced. My, my issue about that is, uh, from a professional point of view, it's very easy to misunderstand whose visibility to the impact. And I know you'll score inherently and you'll score residual, so there are areas before the application of controls where it actually is the risk in his natural state. But imagine if we're reporting and suddenly you think, oh, that risk is okay, because we've measured, we've taken from a top right hand corner of a matrix. Imagine the matrix that's in the, uh, framework, key components document at the top right. And we've taken it right down to the bottom left and you suddenly think that risk is fine, we don't need to pay much attention to that. It's a control fail, the impact goes up as well as it moving across. So I'm a big believer in the impact very rarely gets affected. I'd have to have some really good demonstration of that. Folks might say to me, oh, well, what about insurance? Because if we have some financial loss, we can use our insurance to draw on it. And I go, you might do. But secondly, what about the stuff where you can't use insurance and you're actually suffering reputation damage? You know, cyber insurance, what's that? Cyber insurance, right, interesting one, isn't it? Let's, let's face it, okay. I'm cyber insured. Well, if you get a cyber attack successful, that insurance ain't really going to be worth that much to us, we're starting to realise now. So I'm a big believer that impact remains constant. We could argue that one forever and a day. Uh, and, you know, we could perhaps reflect on some of those scores, uh, and decide whether there is some impact variation. But I'm, I don't like to reduce impact. I like to reduce likelihood.
Okay. I mean, if I could add that I would absolutely in that, in that camp too. So, so the, the impacts, the, the impact of something happening is, you know, so if a bomb's going to hit a house, a bomb could hit a house, what you want to try and do is make it not happen. Because if it happens, the impact can be insane. And that, for me, is, uh, is, is absolute. And, and I, I'm like, I agree with that. So, and making someone else's head. Yeah.
I mean, that strange example, though, talking about what's in this, whereas actually if you knew that was going to happen today, the action you might take would be different to thinking if you knew it was going to happen in three months' time. You can't always know when that might happen, but you can't, but some, but some things give you indication that you are closer to the likelihood of something happening or not. And, and, and that was also always got to be a concern, just sort of.
Yeah, this really is good. And I'm, I'm, there's a place for both. And, and I, I don't like the idea that you can't. You, you can. And, and, yeah, going from, that can bottom line, when I, I'd sort of say you measure it wrong. Frankly, if you're going from the worst risk, yeah, that, yeah, yeah, that, that way, that way. If you're doing that, then you're measuring it wrongly, um, as opposed to, but I mean, you, you have to have some degree of thinking and effort that actually considering that the risk is, and if you do what you can to avoid it, you do what you can to manage it. And it's that, that, that old thing of, you know, population of risk, you, you, you measure, mitigate, avoid and everything else. You know, I mean, I, I absolutely voted insurance if I didn't. I said, I don't sell it, I'll buy it. But I, I, I generally take the point, and what, what, and people, what I do every day is to try and explain to them that it, it, it's not a bucket, it's a tunnel. And there are like holes that it will, will always fall through with insurance. It's harder to explain. It's on sale that I've ever seen in my life. I've never lied anybody about it. Because the thieves and the cyber criminals are always half a meter in front of the people who are trying to protect the risk. It doesn't mean so you don't do anything. And that's why I think you have to look at mitigation as well as impact.
Thank you, councillor Barnet.
I mean, I kind of agree with some of that. I, I understand that there are some risks that there's not much you can do. But I, I do think that there are, I mean, flooding is a classic example where obviously you can mitigate the impact of that. And actually, I would say that cyber attack, I wouldn't say insurance is a good measure, a good, uh, troll on that. But there are things you can do to reduce the impact of it as well as the likelihood. Um, you know, you, you can, if you are breached, that you can, the, you know, the strategy you can take to, to minimize how much people actually get access to. There are things you can do.
Which are partly your internal controls and stuff like that to enable you to, uh, potentially prevent the level of damage that you might, yes, suffer.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I'm yet to see that.
Yeah.
And we can't reveal what's actually happened.
I heard likelihood, I didn't hear.
No.
But I, I, again, and maybe that's a, you know, uh, maybe we're splitting hairs on, on some of these things, because the controls are there to mitigate the risk. And I, I suppose our perspective is that most of that is about, well, all of it is about likelihood and not impact.
Oh, yeah.
Again, ha- having the debate and having the discussion is, is really helpful to, to us in, in taking some of that stuff away, thinking about that. And that's why we, we, we talk a lot about it because it's really important. And, and we, we do, and we agree on most things, we don't agree on everything. And disagreeing committees in other places before. Um, but that's what, that's what it's about. It's about having that debate and hearing those views. And tonight's been fantastic. It's given us so much to go away and think about, look at, you know, moving these documents and moving this whole process forward. And I can't wait to bring it back. Uh, for me, I think where we are, and hopefully you can hear see the enthusiasm we have for what a big guy subject is. But we understand and recognize how important it is. And, and we want to bring, we want to get the message across that we're taking it forward and, and, and we'll get to where we need to get to. In, in the end, my pleasure is, it's not about moving an audit away from no assurance. It's about getting risk line and right for this organisation. And that's what we do. That's, that's what we'll strive to do. And as I say, we want it embedded. And it will change, but if it's embedded, we know that people appreciate it for what it is and respond and react to it accordingly.
Thank you. Do you have one final point?
We have a couple of quibbles about a couple of risks. That's okay. Um, risk number five, which is unable to maintain the old organisational capacity and capability. I was just a bit curious, the appetite for that was open. I would have thought we'd be a bit more cautious on that, seeing as that kind of underpins everything else, really.
Yeah, I think at the time when this discussion took place, I, I think we, uh, the organisation recognised that if we would need to bring folk in in order to ensure that it had the right skills and knowledge in the right posts. And, uh, for certain posts across the whole of local government at the moment, there is a real difficulty insofar as there is a shortage of supply. And I could talk about, for example, section one five one officers, uh, working through at the councils. Uh, planning is another area has problems, uh, and, and some of the statutory officer roles. And, um, if you think about that, there's a shortage of skills and then you've got other councils competing for those posts. And then you've got the onset of LGR as well, then people might be leaving local authorities rather than joining. So when it comes open, what the council decided, or what I said, the management team decided at that point was they probably need to be a little bit more ambitious about the way they went to market, recruited people in order that they didn't necessarily just take a very, um, sort of simplistic, oh, we, 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 we're just nervous about that. We're nervous, but our actions are going to be open to ensure we encourage the right people to apply. And, and that's similar for development of staff who are in post in the council. I think there was an acknowledgement which maybe existed already, or maybe it was one of those sort of eureka moments where they thought, actually, we do need to maintain capacity. We need to develop individuals because there are going to be individuals joining councils that are younger age and we can bring through. So it just sort of makes folk engage differently with that sort of risk. And that's why they put open. Bautious or, uh, minimal would suggest they weren't really up for that at all.
Okay.
And they might be in a more protective, uh, position.
And the other one, and this might be a personal preference, but number nine, which is digital transformation and AI. Personally, I think I would split that into two. Um, the digital transformation, I would want to be a bit more cautious on that, whereas the AI, I think that's a lot more speculative and we should be accepting a bit more risk on that personally.
Very good. Yeah, good point. Yeah.
Thank you. That's been really, really good, actually. Um, so it brings us back to our recommendations that the strategic risk management summary report is noted, but that the approach to risk management is endorsed by this board, leading that policy and strategy, strategic risk registering. So are we, you know, I've got a good amount on that a little bit. So are we in a place where we could propose?
It's been discussed.
Are you sure? Well, then there's more questions, so. So you're happy to propose that still?
I am.
Do you have a second? Councillor, thank you. Uh, all in favour? Councillor, thank you very much. And I believe. Down to, um, yeah. The agenda writing thirteen, provisional capital outturn and carry forward. And so our agenda is asking us to.
We want to give these gentlemen the opportunity to speak.
And can if they wish, anyone who needs to go can go, got homes to go to.
A lot of sense.
Our recommendation to the board tonight, that we note the HRA capital outturn for twenty four, twenty five, assess that as a benefit of A. That we note the general fund capital outturn, that as an independent B. And that we recommend the council, then propose carry forward the general fund set out in three point six, three point two two. Do you have any questions on that?
If I could just make a, um, very brief kind of presentation, so. Um, but given the position where we are, we, and the finances, ordinarily, I would want to bring a consolidated outturn to both, uh, revenue and capital. And capital not affected by income, so we're able to do it. And, and given that there are a number of schemes, um, for carry forward and some don't have budgets in future years. And, and while we hold those, you need the budget carried forward and in place before we can start basing orders against your schemes. That's why we wanted to bring that, um, forward as quickly as we, um, as, as we can. So the tables, the, uh, various dependencies, uh, set out the, um, the outturns for both HRA uh, and capital. The reasons for variances are all set out in three point two, issue people five, um, through to whatever the three, one, two, two, and last one is. And, and they, th- there are various, I'm only going to give them all individually, there's various uh, kind of issues that picked up, um, throughout. Angela knows that we've come very close to that turn across all of the, uh, across all of the capital schemes in HRA. There are some big variances within individual schemes. We'll want to manage those scheme by scheme going forward. And we've talked about that and agree. There are areas where budgets are not brought in, um, when, when they should be. So when, when they're supported, perhaps one of them, where they're supported by external funding, the budget should still be in, in, in place. If external funding changes, the, the budget can change. So, and we can bring that and approve that here. So reports, um, for the various reports, say, a quarter or voluntary, we're going to review and look at the budgets because some of the carry forwards won't be needed in their entirety. We'd also need to bring forward, um, central budget, obviously for things like leisure um, ahead of what we think there might be a capital direction from, from LGR. So, um, this is again, a, a, a starting point, looking backward to twenty four, twenty five. We'll bring the Q one reports, um, certainly, hopefully for everything in September. Uh, there'll be, it'll probably be a period four before, actually. Um, we'll bring that in September, so we can start to see what the overall position is on, um, of both, on, on all four elements. So HRA in general for revenue, HRA in general for capital separated into, into the four areas. So hopefully it's relatively clear, I'll take it.
Councillor Watson.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, uh, fully understand and, and kind of get all of that before and, and the explanations are reached and there. I guess my only comment would be the one, the one, I think it's the largest actually carry forward is the fire doors.
Yeah.
And the fact that actually that is a, you know, a, a risk. Um, and that they were putting it, were kicking the can down the road, or it feels like that. Why is it that we're not just getting on with it, I guess?
So, so we have.
It's a phased programme.
I, I get that, but actually phased, you, you, there's still an element of risk, you know, that, you, you know, fire doors not compliant with the standards. Then in the event of a fire, there is a risk. It's such, just that I prefer that.
So the fire doors in this building have been done and the contract, and the contract has been completed from, from a general fund perspective. I think fire doors on, on, has revenue account have been done.
It was, yeah, well, progress.
Yeah. The, the budget in the general fund, I think, is, is at least in excess, if not way in excess of what was, what was originally required. So the, the contract's about four hundred thousand, the budget's being done. So, so what, what I've, um, what I've said, Charlie and I discussed it. And she has said that there are some follow up works that have come out of the works being done of identifying more money that needs to be spent and that we'll review that in Q one. So I, I don't think we'll. So I, I don't think we'll need all of that money, we'll be able to take some of that back into the incident.
And in practice, just the way the numbers are presented, because eight hundred and thirty one allocated, and we've got six hundred and sixty four carry forward, it looks like not much of it's been done. Whereas if the chances actually, quite a lot of it's been done.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, okay.
But, but again, a good point, and that's, and that's why we need to get this stuff right, we need to get the budgets, because actually that's the thing to be. The only thing you can guarantee is that spend will not be exactly the same as budget. You report the difference, and you explain the reason. And, you know, explaining a four hundred thousand difference is quite hard, because I know it's a first one. So again, in future, what we will do, is try to make sure those budgets are, are right. What we'll do during the year is go, are those budgets right? No, right, okay, we'll change them, because we can change them during the year. What happens, and what's happened here previously, is that the only change in the budget happens at the revised estimate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's not.
Yeah, but there's no forecast changes reflected, particularly on capital.
That's not my approach.
And I think that's, that's positive, it, but it's one of strange things, isn't it? You know, you almost don't wanna over budget and then under spend, and that's equally as bad as overspending, stuff, because you're just getting the wrong thing. I always thought we'd have got quote against that, and we'd have a quote for those works.
They're done. So the three hundred and eighty thousand that I think has been spent on those fires is, is complete. I know, but that, that's the contract that is put in place to do the works, and that works, it's paid for and done. The rest of the budget, I don't think, I think we've got more fire doors to do, I think we've got ancillary works to do, and most of that budget will be returned.
Just incredibly nervous at the moment in time, post Graham fail, eight years on, prosecutions will come at some point. Fire doors, fire stopping, all those things are an easy target.
Yeah.
But for someone to go at, and, and when we talk about, you know, talk, well, even talk about risks.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll bring that back in, I think, I mean, you must be like some, but. So we'll, we'll bring that back in, you know, so this, it's a really good point. Uh, and there's a limited amount I could kind of establish, and what I think I want to do is, is go, I'm not gonna sit in the budget because I don't need it. And then find that actually there's two hundred grand left, so there's works, and we do some, so it's better to carry it forward, review it, and then change it at the point one is, is the, is the kind of approach I've taken on, on most of, on, on most of the, so, all, all of them will need review. Um, and again, it's about engaging with budget holders, they're all named, so we know who they are, and they know who they are. Uh, discussions have been had, delivery, discussions have been had, but we need to have more detailed discussions on each individual scheme, and, and that's what we'll do going forward.
And progress, I think, is very important on that, because sometimes we have capital burn planning, but in fact the programme of continues and evolves and it revolves, and actually it's like, what's the plans of delivery? And, you know, when we talk about having excess budget allocated, it means you haven't tried to be able to do something else. And that, and that can be problematic, so we've made a decision on priorities, obviously prioritising fire doors, but actually, we could have had best part of four hundred thousand to do something else with.
Bob.
That's a Simpson.
Thanks, Jen. Um, and, and to your point, the, the one that I was particularly interested in was, um, you know, housing division would be energy saving measures, where we've got a budget of quarter million, quarter million, you spent two hundred and seventy, you spent that money elsewhere. Uh, I'm not saying I chummed that, but, you know, it's a fact that there is no, but, it is, 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 you know, all the way, because we, we've been doing the stuff, but on, on some of them, uh, there is still quite a bit to do, and I, I am concerned slightly, you know, energy saving measures, it seems to have spent a very modest amount of. Uh, but the, the sunny four sarcastic comment, must be waiting for, was that I want, or now everyone's looking at these reports in the past, the only, the only heading that has actually spent um anything like it's budget was uh staff savers, and I'm, it's wise, yet again, that we are actually spent entirely ability from staff savers, so there you go, no chance there, but, um, but, but I agree with, with my colleague here, um, I'd like to understand this more, because I think there are choices that have clearly been made, and I'm not saying I disagree, because I don't understand them. Um, but inevitably, we're all like, see, we're at a point where the capital that we're allocating within a financial period is as long as possible, spent within that financial period on the items that it was raised for. And, and some of these, you know, we, we, we decide that's what we wanted to do. And, and if it's not being done, the cash flow needs to be spent somewhere. And we, you can go back to it.
Again, I, I couldn't agree more. What, what I'll always say to do is, is the fair and transparent reports with fair and transparent reasons for variance, um, because all, all of this stuff is, is a priority, this has been set in the budget. And if it's not done, it's not really the priority that's been set. Now, if that changes, fine, we can come, we can make those changes through the proper process, which is here and at council, given value. Most of this stuff will need to go to council again, formally, formally ratified. Um, so this is the start, again, uh, sound like a broken record. This is the starting point of how I want to present information and the, the dialogue and debate that we have a, a, around this. The, the same will go for revenue, um, and, you know, obviously the pinch points around revenue will be um, will probably be greater, because the pressure's going to be more revenue, particularly if we move towards the, the, the budget for both thousand revenue account and, and for general fund. But a- again, hopefully you can see what, what it's gonna look like, how it's gonna feel again. It'll be great to be dictating what's down, having down three or four resources, and you will go, okay, I, I understand this, and I get this. And I'm gonna use that old phrase, you know, we're on a journey, um, but, but we are. And, you know, hopefully, you can see what it's, what it's gonna look like, but truly looking backwards at something that, you know, we've been doing for a year, and if in my eyes and my mind, you can do properly, reviewing, you know, we all do that in a year, we do need to figure that budget, we understand the reasons for it, and we accept it and we move on, and we don't get to the end of the year and have one point eight million that we're taking into the next year, because we haven't spent it. In the year we said we were gonna spend it. And that, that's, that will be the acid test, that's how we get to the, the, after the next year, and that's, and that's how we're, we're looking, it's not one point eight million, because it's gonna be managed, we can talk about it, agree it, and go, yeah, we don't wanna slip that forward, but we understand that this project hasn't moved as quickly as possible, we've got additional roofs, raindrops. Those type of things, and those type of reasons, I think you'll accept and understand, but you ought to see them, and have one of us, you know, explain it to you, explain the reasons, lot here, I'm kind of, I don't have.
And I think that it's, they need to be seen as not like buckets of money for this task or this task. They need to, the project that is, is assigned with that, and the business case of that project needs to look at timeframe as well. And if that is over two years, then that needs to be reflected properly in the catch of the programme.
Totally, absolutely.
Which is, how is it?
There is no profiling happening at the moment, but absolutely. And I agree.
Different specific question, should I, again, have thought today's early one. The planning system replacement, well, I think it sounds spent eleven thousand eight hundred quid. And if they haven't done it, or is this a different planning system?
No, I think, well, most of the budget's in next year, but there's, some spend has happened this, so, um, that, that's my, that's my understanding, so there is probably.
Part one, actually, yeah. I mean, I, I get, perhaps we'll talk about it afterwards, but I, I know we were engaged in a system that we then chose not to buy.
Yeah.
And we'll probably get some of that back, I think.
Uh, yeah. If, if we get it back, it will come back in as funding, so, so it will sit in the background, and again, I should have.
Someone's drawn on it for the new system.
Yeah. So again, nor- normally this would come with a, um, with a funding schedule on as well, so how much is funded from reserve, how much is funded from capital receipts, how much is funded from internal borrowing. And, uh, and until, until the revenue outturn, and I've got a position on what the reserves are at the end of um, twenty four twenty five, I won't be able to do that. So this, this will come back with a funding schedule on it, once, once the agents provide that schedule. And the same goes for, for H R A, it'll be funded by M R R and, and various other elements, so you'll bring that, or I will bring it back.
And, Jen, it sounds like we're back into the I C D R.
Yeah, we are.
What the M R R, please?
Uh, sorry, major repairs, please.
We need a glass room. I think we'll conclude that on me and glass room.
Love T L A.
Uh, on that note, I'll propose that from the chair, then there's recommendations as listed, and, oh, sorry, to check on that, apologies, okay.
Sorry. And, I'm, I'm trying to chat, I just wanted to raise one question about the play area development and budgets. And now I understand that there's two hundred and four thousand in the um budget at the moment, and there's three and developments that are planned, and, but it is saying that the full budget won't, won't be spent. And so I, I don't think there'll be particularly a lot, but what I do wanna raise is that saying that if there is any money left over, play area developments are so important, particularly to try and drive down crime and things like that, and that we do actually look at spending the budget on them.
Yeah, so, so the budget's being, so the, the three are, I think all three are in, in progress, but they won't be completed by the end of the year, and the spend won't happen by the end of the year, and that's why we're stepping it forward. There's, there's more money than would normally be intended to be spent, so I think that, that is normally one or two a year, then normally about fifty thousand. And, and what Becky and I have discussed is, to go back to Mark and Martin's point and your point, it's about profiling, so if we're gonna do two, great, it's a hundred thousand in a year. And if they get done, and it's a hundred thousand, great. If they don't, and they slip, what does that do to then the next year? Because have we got the capacity to be able to do four in a year, if two don't get done when they're, when they're supposed to get done? And that's the sorts of stuff we just need to keep on top of, and we will meet Becky, and we'll have those conversations. And then they'll be brought through back here, and sometimes Becky will come and sit here, and you'll be able to say, well, why are those three not being done in a year? And there'll be good reasons, I'm sure, why that, why that's the case. And however, you know, that, that's the development, and again, the, the, um, improving the maturity of the process is what, is what I want to try and bring, so, and, and hopefully you can start to see what is gonna look like and feel like, hopefully, that that's a positive rather than.
But the other side of that, and the important side for me, and that in understanding when we do things as well, is our cash flow management, our treasury management. Because that's the, in one of the other impacts, the unseen impact of the numbers in the world, and you need to manage that.
We, we, we do, I, I, I mean, so, so, so in terms of cash flow, we don't have an issue with cash flow, we're, um, pretty pretty cash rich, and, but we are going to spend a lot of money in the next, uh, few years. And so we need to look on a scheme by scheme basis, but we need to look realistically um, at the authority and spending, because um cash doesn't care uh about whether it's H R A or general funds or capital or revenue, and it should completely different discipline, treasury is a completely different discipline, so. And I'm gonna really embarrass myself now, I'm assuming treasury management comes here and not exec board.
Yes, it does.
So, and, so we will bring those treasury reports, which separate out that cash flow and treasury management, as a, as a completely different discipline than looking at individual projects. Clearly, the individual projects impact on cash flow, and our need at some point to, to borrow, because if you can spend a source of money.
And ways that might be, and the timing of that, and that's really key.
Yes, and, and we have, um, I don't, I don't know if they've, they've ever been here, but, um, because I like to bring guests. And, and Link are the, uh, our, our, our treasury management advisors. Um, Adam Verlison's our, um, our lead on treasury management. And at least once a year, I will bring him to do a, um, a session, a training session, uh.
He has, I don't think he's been here, he's been to me, especially, he hasn't been to board.
Okay, well, once a year at least, he will come, and certainly when we start getting into the funding and financing of big and major projects, then, then he will, will be here, um, sat behind me, um, supporting me the same way he's done itself tonight.
Right then, I think we were just about to go, sorry, you can have a final question. Um, so propose that from the chair, have a second for this. That's a Simpson, all in favour? Thank you. That's, and that concludes our business tonight, and I'd like to thank our guests. Um, slightly longer than normal, so we've been through a lot tonight, so thank you very much, and thank you very much for your patience and your questions. Thank you.